It's called a order of the meeting, City Council meeting for January 11th, 2024. In at about 7:02, we have a quorum. We're a little short here today. That's to recall. Pam Connolly, I haven't, we haven't heard from her, but it looks like she's absent right now. Mr. Gross? Mr. Marvel?
Here.
And Rose, we have an excuse from her. She's got a death in the family. Mrs. Race?
Here.
And there is here. I would like to make it entertain a motion to excuse the absent members if applicable.
Make that motion.
On the public comment then. Oh yeah, I'm sorry, the pledge of allegiance, I roll, I missed, I skipped that. Sorry. Yeah, that's really important.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
You have a motion and a second to excuse your absence.
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Jerry and Renee? We take a vote?
Sure.
All those four yay? All those opposed? No? Alright, encourage the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, the council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you, if you would like, and if you would like a response. Are there any members of the public that wouldn't like to make a public comment?
Perry Hopkins, 90 North Main Street. I hope everybody enjoyed all the holiday festivities, our last quarter of the year events between the Halloween and all the different Christmas stuff and then the New Year's, everything went well. I know I've seen a couple of you guys out for both Christmas and for the New Year's. It was quite a ball drop. We had a lot of people from out of town that had never been to Cedar Springs that showed up. For those that didn't make it to the New Year's ball drop or see anything on Facebook on it, it was well attended. It did its job. Our intention was to get people into the stores and establishments that were open and a couple of them said it was their best, if not second best, day of the year, which one of the naysayers actually told me that. So I was happy for them and happy both that, yeah. Some of the ones that gave us the hardest time from the get-go saying that it wouldn't turn out very well, they said it went really well for them and they have plans for making their portion of it better next year, so.
Good for you.
The chamber, we're planning to have all of our event applications for 2024 in by the end of February so that we can promote the different events, but also our goal is to merge with as many of the different organizations in Cedar to kind of work on bringing everybody together. We started that a few years ago and then a few hiccups got in the way and we're hoping that we can utilize at least four or five of the big events in the year to get more boards involved than just two or three. Be nice if we can have some that are unified with all of the different boards in the community, different groups.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to give a public comment? Raise your hand or unmute yourself. Is there anybody on?
There's one person from the public.
No comment?
Not raise their hand or unmute.
Okay, hearing no additional public comment, we will move on to a presentation from our auditors on the 2022-23 audit.
This is Peter Hefner and I represent Ray Devell Hefner, the firm of independent certified public accountants that conducted the audit of the city for the year ended June 30th, 2023. And within the audit report itself, there are statements in the front of the audit and then there are statements in the back of the audit. Those statements in the front of the audit are going to be included in the presentation and we're going to take a look at kind of a historical perspective. The statements in the back of the audit are for the smaller funds or the non-major funds. I just point out that they're there, they're, that the this amount of activity and the balance sheet or the most substantial assets and liabilities are presented in the front of the report. Within the report, we provide an opinion on page one. It's multiple pages long and I'll summarize it. It's our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position, results of operations, cash flows where applicable, of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund, the aggregate remaining funds, so all of the other funds put together, as well as your component unit downtown development authority in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's the highest or the ideal opinion you would like to receive on your financial statements. It's that you're following the standards as required by the governmental accounting standards board, Michigan Department of Treasury. And so summary, we also provide an opinion on your system of internal controls and that's in the back of the report. It's on page 49 or begins on page 49. And that opinion is provided when your audit is conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. So we conducted your audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards. The opinion on page 49 is what I would refer to as a clean opinion. It's that we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in your system of internal controls over accumulation and preparation of the information within these financial statements. So two positive opinions between the page one and page 50, the last page of the opinion, are the financial statements. And I'm going to walk you through some pictures and then if you have questions, we can delve into the details. Again, I want to point out that our opinion is on the governmental activities. That's all of your governmental funds pushed together and all of your fixed assets and all of your liabilities associated with the governmental activities presented on a full accrual or a business perspective. So we have your governmental activities, your business type activities. The business type activities are your enterprise operations, the water, sewer, enterprise funds. So we give an opinion governmental activities, business type activities, each major fund and then the aggregate remaining funds and the component units. So as we go through this, I just want to point out how things are being presented. Governmental activities, business activities, full accrual, all the assets, all the liabilities. So if you would go to the next slide for me. This is on, on your financial statements themselves, it'll give you an idea of where this information is coming from. But this information is coming from pages 10 and 11 and it's the revenues that were received or accrued by your governmental activities. And it's basically showing you what are the sources of funding used to fund the next slide, which will look at your expenses. I want to point out here that a large portion of the funding is that capital grant and that's a road project that was funded with your funds, state funds and federal funds, mostly state and federal funding. That's why it's such a large portion of this graph this year. Historically, that would be a very small portion. So if we pull that out of there, you will see that your property taxes are your largest component. I like to see that from the perspective of property taxes are within your control. State funding is not. Grant funding is not. So that's a positive, big portion of the total if you excluded that kind of one-time project. Now, the next slide that we have, this is looking at your expenses from that same financial statement or page 10. This is where the dollars went to and it's showing to what extent are they self-funding. So we look at general government and general government expenses are being covered by general government revenues. That's charges for services, fees, et cetera, et cetera. Public safety, you can see a large expense, typically your largest. And you can see here that the funding is, there is no direct funding or charges for services or minimal charges for services, operating grants or capital grants. That differential is picked up with unrestricted property taxes and unrestricted state share of revenue is covering that differential. So this is just showing how self-supporting your operations. Then we look at public works, very small portion of the total. Streets, you can see there's a huge amount of revenue, not a lot of expense. Because at this full accrual perspective, that road was not an expense or an expenditure. It was actually shown as a fixed asset and it'll be depreciated or expensed over its estimated useful life, just like a business would depreciate a building. But came in to make that happen. And then we have our culture and recreation, approximately self-supporting. Typically, this picture, you would see public safety as your very, very much so your largest expense. Unusual year with the road project and when it's funded with federal and state funding. Now, the next slide that we have is looking at your general fund. The general fund and your remaining governmental funds are accounted for with the modified accrual basis of accounting. So it's just showing dollars flowing in and flowing out. If you buy a new road, theoretically, it would show up as an expense on the next slide. But here we're just looking general fund. You see positive, very solid property tax growth. Property tax values are the key here. You can see the remaining revenues are really kind of stagnant. Some improvements from the state perspective, some of that can be driven by the new census, so more people, more dollars and also more sales tax that are being collected. Now, the next slide that we have is looking at your property taxes just by themselves. And again, pretty, very solid growth. Incredible. That's great. Helps fire, et cetera, et cetera. Now, the next slide that we have is looking at those expenditures of the general fund. These expenditures would be if you purchased a new police car, it would show up as an expenditure for public safety. So modified accrual, flowing in or flowing out dollars. You can see here inflationary pressure on general government, public safety, the same, held south, held very consistent with the year before, and those are the primary drivers of the general fund. You have to have the administrative, the tax component, clerk, et cetera, et cetera, voting. And then public safety, very typical picture. We work with many cities. Public safety is, I have to, I would say 99.9% of the time, it's the largest expenditure. There can be exceptions. Now, the next slide that we have is just looking at the bottom line. How did you win the year? So this is your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers. So you can see very consistent. You're holding a balance. Should you need to replace a very expensive roof or something of that nature, maybe able to cover it with cash on hand versus having to go to the debt market. So impressive financial position. The next slide that we have is looking just at your sewer operations. Now, this is a perspective of full accrual accounting. So just like a business, we would show our fixed assets as an asset and depreciate them. And our liabilities would be, the principal payments would not be an expense. It would just be a reduction in that liability. So very different perspective. But you can see here, five years, positive bottom line allows you to put infrastructure in place. Not huge amounts, but helps fund projects when you need replacement or a rehab or things of that nature without having to bond for it. You take a look at the next slide. This is your water operation. Again, picture shows you have a positive change in the bottom line, allows you to put dollars aside to replace things. So we looked at your governmental activities. These are your business activities individually, the water and sewer. And your largest fund, the general fund, which is a major fund. If, I also wanted to point out, when you take a look in the financial statements, there's a schedule that shows your debt. I think for governmental activities, you paid off about $500,000. Business type activities, about $200,000. So $700,000 worth of debt paid off, put aside. So very positive. And by far, the biggest projects this year would have been, I believe it was at Main Street. And then there were some other paving projects were the primary capital outlay for the current year. Advertising slide. Be happy to try and answer any questions you have regarding the information within the audit. There's a, the financial statements in the front are the biggest. And after those, we will have the notes that talk about when you have an option. Which option did you choose for accounting for things and what happened with that? What happened with your pension? What happened with your capital assets? So quite a lot of detail. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have. We also provide a letter of communications that's required under auditing standards. That talks about our responsibilities, your responsibilities. I would refer to it as boilerplate letter. It's addressing the auditing standard that says you need to do this. We did identify, I think it was two adjustments and proposed those to management. They made them. But if I make some changes in this process kind of thing, so positive. Other question? Answer for you?
Just comment. Positive factors.
That's great. It's a lot more fun to participate in a meeting like this when, than when there are issues. Get the opportunity to work with your staff and to come and see you. So thank you very much. And my name is on the, on each of those opinions. Feel free to contact us if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, this is where we will move on to public hearings, but since we have none scheduled, we are going to move on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections needing, needed to the agenda? Anybody noticing?
I got a couple of questions. Item H, consent agenda. Sorry, I lost my voice.
Okay, so do you want to move H to the, you want to move that to?
Yes.
For discussion? Do it, should put under action?
Yeah.
So that's going to become B under action, H to B? D isn't dog. There's more. Yeah. Yes, let's put it under D. It's in dog. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Renee or Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to consent agenda. So we need to to adopt the consent agenda with the changes, correct? I'll make it, would like a motion to do that, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, changing the item H under the consent agenda, agenda to the actions D. To move it to the actions D.
I'll second that.
Alright.
Yep.
Well done.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Ms. Asherson, yes. Alright, move on to the action items. Our first action item is a motion to permit the sale of former city property valued at less than 1,000 former accounts of phone books and other items. Did you want to talk about that, Darla?
Yeah, so in our current policy, sale of surplus city property, it doesn't define how to sell items valued at less than $1,000. So I am recommending we determine a minimum bid for the item. Put it out there. Bids are due at a certain date and time and highest bidder gets the items. And then make it very clear in the, you know, the agreement they sign when they come to buy it, that the property is sold as is, no warranty.
Are we looking at selling them as a group or individually?
How do you plan on?
Worth even selling. They are non-functional, so those, those will be turned into our IT company for recycling.
Be enough to be an anchor, so.
How do you plan on selling them?
Determining a minimum bid. I don't remember what we purchased them for and that was five years ago, so determine a minimum bid, say the details of the computer, minimum bid, you know, 50 bucks, for example. Bids are due by February 1st.
A website or a?
On our Facebook.
Okay, marketplace or something like that.
On our website, just internally.
Got it. Okay, alright. Never done this one before.
Yeah.
I know, I'm like never, I've never seen this before, so just curious how that works out. So, okay. Yeah.
So
one on the way out, free.
Yeah, there's just no need for him to sit on a shelf and they've all been cleared out, I'm assuming.
All done with it, okay.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item A.
I'll second it.
Alright, Mr. Gross?
Yeah.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yeah.
Ms. Asherson, yes. Action item 7B, motion to approve election inspector and election commission hourly pay as follows. Election inspector's chairperson at $17 per hour with a two-hour minimum and the election inspector receiving board election commission at $15 per hour with a two-hour minimum effective immediately.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt B as presented.
I'll second that.
Did you want to say anything else, Darla, before we?
Self-explanatory. These are needed decisions and they
How many more?
I
First thing we need, I was going to be part of my report, so. Right now I have four vacant shifts, so we've done a really good job of filling a lot of those shifts, so four more. We really need Republican workers, so we have more than enough Democratic workers, so. There have been a few questions on how much does it pay? And then I've had a few people not, you know, follow through with the application. So I think that this would be a really good thing to incentivize individuals to work for.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Ms. Asherson, both shifts.
It's a shame that the money is the first thing they think about. Simply is their political and governmental responsibility. But if the money is what brings them out, then you know we need them, that's what we got to do, so.
Alright, moving on to action item 7C, motion to approve resolution 2024-04, a resolution to enact compensation for added duties and responsibilities for election purposes from proposal 22-2.
So this is, this is staff internally as opposed to volunteers that come and just work election day or nine days prior to election day. We've got a full-time clerk and a part-time deputy clerk. They are putting in a ton of hours and they deserve to be compensated, you know. So.
Are we looking at lump dollar sums, additional hours? How are we looking at the the pay?
So the deputy clerk, that's, she is a full-time employee, but she's part-time finance director, part-time deputy clerk, so it would be overtime for her. And then for the clerk who salary pay more additional hours required on her behalf than, you know, her regular duties. So we lump sum per day for the salaried employees.
That's to be determined yet?
No.
It was in your packet, was that? Sure. Don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry.
Not worried about it anyway. I'm not worried about it because they're earning it.
Yes.
So I make a motion that we adopt item C as presented. I'll second it.
Alright, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Ms. Asherson, both shifts.
People have changed these processes. Have no idea what they've created.
Alright, we're moving on to action item B then, pulled off the consent agenda. Did you want to talk about that, Darla, please?
Yeah, so in our capital outlay plan for the equipment fund, this was the next item on our list to replace the backhoe front-end loader. We don't have the cash on hand in the equipment fund to make this purchase. So Bill and Tanya went to the dealership and they just so happened to have a machine that would work for us on the lot. They're willing to lease us, lease it to us for five years for an annual payment. And then we have options at the end of the lease. We can turn it back in, start a new lease or buy it outright, depending, depending on the hours that are on it, how it works for us over the next five years. In my seven years here, we've never completely we've ever leased a piece of equipment. But for this kind of equipment, I'm in favor of this because a backhoe is a big piece of equipment. A lot can go wrong with it. Granted, this is supposedly brand new, but still, things can go wrong. So in a lease situation, the dealership takes care of all that. We pay our annual payment, dealership takes care of it for five years. That's a win-win for both of us, I think. So for this piece of equipment, I'm, I'm in favor of this lease.
My question like you said, we don't lease new equipment very regularly, it sounds like. This is a $151,000 piece of equipment. And I think they're giving us a very reasonable trade allowance, you know, the 28,000 for the whatever we got there, the 2,000. My concern is after 59 months at 1,600 bucks a month, we still owe $55,000 on this piece of equipment and it's still not ours. So I guess I would ask, can we, does the
So, I guess I would ask, can we, does the dealership have a good used one that we can take out a lease payment for way cheaper and be able to buy when we're done with it after five years, you know?
At that zero, at zero, have have it fully paid for at the end of the five years? Okay. Tanya, if you're online, can you answer that question?
Can you hear me? Okay, yeah, when we went down there, they didn't have any. Everything that they have is newer, like new. And if we were to be able to find one, it's hard to say like if there would be issues with it. If there's issues with one that we find, it's up to us to fix. With us doing this lease, if we come across an issue, they're gonna fix it, and then at the end of the lease, if we decide to buy it, we just pay what's owed.
On that, and for what it's worth, is whatever we pay into a used piece of equipment, we may be leasing something that was turned in for the same reason we are turning in ours. They may have put a new coat of paint on it, little bit of work, and then you get what you get. Right. Uh we may have more downtime with it than we would uh if we had a brand-new one to begin with, right, so.
Correct, and if we were to get something that was used and the motor goes out in it, we have to pay to fix that. Or if we get this one and lease it, the motor goes on it, out on it, they pay to fix that. So hopefully, if there's any issues, they're all gonna come up within the first five years.
I think the only comment I have on it is I've leased vehicles throughout my life. And the bottom line, and the very bottom line, there's like an additional payment or an amount that is due. Um so I would just recommend really reviewing that paperwork and making sure that's exactly what you're paying for. It may say twenty thousand annually, but when you're done and you hand that in, there's always some type of a payment that they want on top of that, so make sure it's it's in there, you gotta add it to this, or just make sure that you're covered in that situation too. But I think having a new piece of equipment to lease, I mean, we don't have time, we don't have multiple vehicles to do if something does break down. I think we've been enough, we've been through that enough that we're just done with that, and we're small enough that we need every piece of equipment working at all times, so I think it's a good deal.
I I will make a motion that we approve uh item H as presented. I'll take it back. I'm gonna change the letter. I'm looking at H, D as presented.
I'll second that.
Mister Gross.
Yes.
Mister Marvel.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Miss Asherson, yes.
Thank you.
Alrighty. I, we are on um discussion items then, I believe. And our first discussion is an ordinance to amend marijuana hours of operation. First reading, would you like to begin the discussion?
Yes, so after the last council meeting, um I referred this to our city attorney, who drafted, um so only the yellow section in the ordinance um pertains to ours. So we left them blank. If you would like to change the closing hours, um that's what we're here to do. Couple other things that I put in the packet, um we had our um code enforcer call the existing um marijuana businesses. Um many of them said they wouldn't choose to stay open beyond nine PM, just based on their um at that time of night. Um but we're okay if the city allow, you know, it it would be allowed, they wouldn't necessarily have to close at that time if we chose a later time. Um but they may stay open till whatever time we determine. Uh and then I also included in there um surrounding uh cities' policies, you know, some are open twenty-four hours, some are closed at ten PM, nine PM, twelve AM.
I don't know how far you wanna go with this. I I know it was discussed possibility of being the same as alcohol, going to two AM. Be opposed to that. I would have no problem if it was considered to be ten o'clock. I really don't think there's a need to go beyond that. Like you've now said, that a lot of them probably wouldn't go that far anyway, uh if they can't get what they need by then, and hopefully it's all medicinal, but uh I just don't see extremely long extension of hours.
So I wasn't requesting that they be open later, okay, okay.
Just saying you were, I'm just saying, I just don't see it. Uh the two o'clock, definitely not. I I just don't think it needs to be extended that much further.
I would, I I would go for at the latest eleven, um because he's trying to get that second shift um area in. Um but like we said, you don't have to, they don't have to be open till eleven, but I wouldn't say no later than eleven. I don't, I don't think we need to go any, you know, the bars are, we don't even have bars open in town that late. You know, we, it and they're they're closing up, you know, they're still being around, but yeah, I don't think we, you know, given, given a couple hours, you know, I don't see a problem with that, but I'm two o'clock, no.
My concern is the worrying about the second shift. If they needed it that bad, they could stop and pick it up and take it with them on the way into work.
Well, people don't, you know, they don't plan ahead like that, right, Jerry?
Maybe they have to, okay, so, okay.
It's, yeah. You know, but it's just a business that's trying to be able to see if they can get more income, I'm sure, and then they might decide later on not to you know, go back to nine. They might close at nine, but it's just, they just wanted a little more options, I think, is all.
So what is the, oh, so the brewery, Redbird, they're closed at ten during the week? Do you know?
Nine during the week.
And on the weekends it's ten. Yeah, okay. Yeah, and we know that could change again, of course, but I'm good with ten. I mean, on the weekends, eleven. Give it that option, but.
Well, I think the only, one thing that they were um discussing too is, um and then when there are events. You know, so we always, we did talk before, like it's easier to change the time for for certain than to have to try and change a time for an event. I mean, though, eleven o'clock would be closer than to the midnight ball thing, but I don't, I don't think we need to be open late. I mean, I'm still, I'm I'm fine with ten, eleven, it's not a big deal, at least.
For you, with a request to be, oh, this, to to have businesses open in the social district, different situation, and and the person that was here last time discovered they weren't in the social district area, but that's why they were requesting a s- special circumstances if a special event was presented to council, but that would be handled with the special event.
So they would be able to apply for something like that, too?
And and city council would pass a special resolution with whatever requirements were to be put in place for that special event.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'd stay in line with kinda what's going on in the city.
I think ten o'clock is good, eleven on the uh Thursday, Friday, Saturday. That's what I think.
The ten during the week, eleven on the weekend?
Yeah, because even if we, if they're wait for that second shift, which it doesn't, they're not out until eleven, then there's no, then they'd have to be open till eleven thirty, twelve. It's just doesn't.
Just what I understand, are we discussing the hours, or are we talking about the social district?
I'm sorry. Discussing the hours, but but the reason
Just the hours.
The reason why I brought that
Sure.
Other in was because sometimes it's easier to have the hours than to try and to change it for a bunch of different things. That's why I brought that, but that, yes, now we're back on track with just talking about.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I wanted to make sure it was all tied in the way it should be. Yeah.
If a special event comes up, then
Then they'll they'll do that, so then they have that opportunity, so we don't have to worry about that. We can, we can set a time and not
That opportunity right now as it is, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is like just our first reading, so we're just discussing. Yeah, yeah, I I'd 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 say stay in line with what the city's, you know, kinda where the hours are in the city, we can always change it, you know. Try it. What do you think, Mister Gross? Yeah, that's true. They can change, yeah, they could change that. Well, how how are you guys feeling about the during the week ten and the weekend eleven?
Well, you know how I feel about it, begin with, okay?
Alright.
Okay. I I can see it happening, okay? There was something that did send the antenna up, as they were talking about the uh the social distancing. There's not supposed to be using it out in the public anyway, are there?
No, 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 just, no, so, yeah. No, social distancing, no.
Anyway, and the fact that they were concerned because they weren't in it, uh I don't see them getting in it. Okay, so I I told you what I believed.
Yes, it's just business if they can get get into the establishment. Yeah, they just would think they might draw more people in if there was stuff going on downtime, is all. Yeah.
I told you what I thought, so.
Yeah, but I mean, you didn't, I just didn't know if you had the difference. You still want it to be ten the whole time, you don't want because she she mentioned ten during the weekend, eleven at. Okay.
As it's written, I'm happy with it.
Okay.
That's
It was a good discussion.
Alright, we're gonna move on then to um eight B discussion, which is the vacant city council seat, which are um Ashley Hamel has moved out of the jurisdiction on us. She got her dream house.
By a stone throw.
So, um Ms. Falcon, would you begin the discussion, please?
From previous um times that this has happened, um many, many years ago, uh the council accepted the board, uh completed board application, resume and cover letter, just stating why they feel they want to have a council seat. Um so we can start advertising that as of Monday, uh January fifteenth. We could accept those applications, resumes and letters of interest until January thirty-first. That way, when we put the packet out for the February eighth council meeting, we will know how many people have applied. And then I was recommending maybe five PM, February eighth, before the next council meeting, we could hold the interview uh session for the candidates that have applied. And then uh whoever's chosen at the February eighth meeting, we could swear them in at the March fourteenth meeting. Um you know, let them know ahead of time they've been chosen, so we can send them the packet, they can be up to speed on that council meeting with with all the information. And be sworn in at the beginning of the March fourteenth meeting and participate in the March fourteenth meeting.
Time, uh there is time is of the essence, so we're not just rushing, yes, we're not rushing this just be, just to rush it, we're in sixty days.
Days.
We can obviously let others know, because there's gonna be drones of people wanting to do this. Um that if they obviously aren't chosen, we have other seats that will be coming up at the end of this year. Not looking at you, Jerry. Um and that we will keep them in mind kinda thing too.
Yeah.
Right?
Council seat.
Yep.
Particularly gets appointed, they they serve the whole year and a half term. Which is November twenty twenty-five. I'm I'm a little unfamiliar with the process, how does, do you do the interviews and then you, we do the interviews? Ah, alright.
The interviews in an open session, public can attend.
Okay, so they have to fill paperwork out, obviously, submit it so many days before her next meeting.
Now, are they submitting it online to you, then how are they submitting it?
Me, drop it off in person, ju- just so we can put it together and have it in your packet, so you can review it before that February eighth meeting.
Has meant
Yeah.
What they need to do, right?
Just
Information you would, you think you would need? I mean, the resume, letter of interest, the application.
So here he asks me, how often does this happen?
Last time that I found was um twenty twelve. So obviously not very often.
And it's usually because somebody moving out of the, out of the city, it's not necessarily, it's not usually because they they're quitting in the middle of their you know, term.
Right.
It's usually, it it, I think in twenty twelve, I don't know, it's they moved off.
And just so I'm I'm clear too, these people we interview, do we, does it have to be an anonymous vote with us? Who gets the position or just a majority vote?
It's a majority.
Or can multiple people get appointed and then we vote on each one, or how does this work?
It'll be council discussion, you'll, you can discuss each one, you know, pros and cons, you can maybe rate them. Majority vote.
Discussion without the people in the room? Or are we having the whole discussion in open?
I would assume you would discuss it at the February eighth couns- regular council meeting, do the interviews at five.
We discuss it, okay, yeah, gotcha.
Council meeting starts at seven, it'll be on the agenda. Cons of each one. I make a motion to appoint so-and-so to the, fill the vacant city council seat.
I mean, if there were concerns we had about a particular um candidate, um we would bring that up then, we
Council discussion?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, we obviously want someone that has a municipal background, but that's not
And we'll get the
Always.
Yeah.
People are just volunteering to do this, so we just probably wanna work, look at what their work history is and
Set up a form of consistent, consistent questioning?
Yes. Good.
So that should be created prior to?
Yes.
Yeah.
Information from us that we would like to be on it?
Yeah, yep, and then we can formulate it in the correct verbiage. Yeah.
When do you need those by?
Um, January thirty-first.
Have accepted her resignation already, correct?
That was part of the consent agenda tonight.
So then um we're ready to, are we done discussing? Ready to move on to the commu- uh communications.
Um I just wanted to point out two of them to your attention. I hope you saw them in there, K and L. Um these are concept designs created by Fleece and Vanderbrink for um Wriggle Park. Some new playground areas and some sidewalks and stuff, and a new uh concept for Morley Park. Uh please look them over if you have any comments, questions, concerns. Um once we kinda get these in a final state, if grant funding becomes available, this gets submitted with the grant application.
So this is what we're looking at doing possibly, and we're gonna find, right?
Yes.
But we can work with the engineers to help us, you know, come up with estimates. You know, we don't have to do the whole thing at once. What if we do it in phases? You know, we, we'll kind of have cost estimates of what it would do to accomplish this.
Kind of a rough sketch of what we're kind of looking at, right?
I mean, Wriggle Park, the playground equipment there hasn't been updated in many years, so.
It's beautiful.
That alone. But then we, I liked the, um, idea of having like sidewalks connecting different pieces of it. Maybe more trees or shading strategically located.
Yeah, I did take a look at both of those. Um, Morley Park was a little bit. It looked like there was more just sidewalks through there. And then there was like a pavilion with a fire pit. Um, I didn't see really. We would keep the same equipment, but put new foundation or bottom, whatever layer. Is that what it said on there?
Existing playground equipment with new surfacing.
Yeah. So.
But that, that day that we toured Morley Park, he did kind of point out some of the pieces are, they wouldn't meet, I don't know, safety requirements or something anymore or so.
So, okay. Yep. So, yeah, like that's what I said. It was just kind of a first shot of what we're looking at.
Round things around it.
Oh, I got so many memories.
I think.
You have any comments on them? Just let me know so I can give feedback to Rick at Fleece and Vanderbrink.
And moving on to department reports, city manager.
I don't have much. Um, I had a very good relaxing holiday uh, s- time and, and a much needed vacation. So I am ready to hit the ground running and start with our budget for the new fiscal year. Plans in place. That's all I have.
All righty. Department of Public Works.
Not a whole lot. We were finally able to get out and plow. So that was nice. We're looking forward to the story coming up.
We'll be too excited pretty soon here.
Yep. We're getting ready for this weekend. Well, other than that, not a whole lot.
Um, I do have a question on the bump outs.
Yes.
Um, it looks like just a bunch of snow kind of laying there. Is that supposed to be shoveled off so people could? Or we just haven't gotten to that yet? Or did I miss that? I just felt like it was just.
Yeah, we haven't, I'm not exactly sure what we're gonna do with that yet, but we, we haven't gotten to it yet. We came and we started at three yesterday morning, left at, I think it was like eleven or eleven-thirty and then came in this morning and started removing snow.
Cause I would think that would be part of, well, so the, um, crap or the people that own their businesses shovel or do we run a machine down there? I thought we used to have a.
Down to take one swipe up one side and down the other.
On the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk. It's up to the businesses to, you know, remove the rest of it. Um, but like Tanya said, we, the bump outs are probably the city's. I mean, that's, the corners are ours. Um, just haven't had time to get to that yet.
Just noticed that. I just was curious, but I know you're gonna be busting the next. So absolutely just wanted to point it out. I noticed that and just, I was more like, oh yeah, that's a new thing they gotta drive around, you know? But that's great. Everything's clear and good job.
Kind of related to Public Works, um, from the last council meeting. I think Renee, you had said it was kind of dark crossing the road by the brewery there. We did go down there, uh, Tanya and Bill did and discovered that on the corners, there's supposed to be two lamp posts. There's only one on that side. So we've ordered another one when it comes in. Two lights there should brighten that corner. So, yeah. Yep.
As far as as more of those two, just, so I heard you right. Uh, businesses are responsible for the sidewalks in front of their business and the drives. Okay. And I get, yeah, I used to shovel snow. It, it's, it goes fast, you know, and the demand's there, but I was talking with a lady this morning who's handicapped. Yeah, she actually had to go up, out in the road to get to her destination, you know? So.
Kids walking to school and.
Yeah.
All right, Sergeant Props.
It's working. I just have a couple of things. First off, I want to say, talk about the New Year's Eve special event we had for the first time. I thought everything went really, really well. I thought the road closures, uh, at eight, nine P M. Went really well. Actually, we closed them at eight so they could set up. Uh, we had our digital signs that we borrowed from the Kent County Road Commission. I think that they helped give the public a heads up that this is gonna happen. Uh, the traffic at that time was much slower than I thought it was gonna be. I really don't work nights, so I was kind of surprised that Main Street actually slowed down quite a bit in the evening. So I thought everything went really well. We had no complaints from the public. Everything was positive comments about it. It started off a little bit slow, but by the end, when the ball dropped, there.
Those fall, yes.
Hundred, five hundred people around that ball, so.
That was awesome.
Really, really well. And then the other thing I have for you is, uh, Deputy Scott Cook is gonna be retiring. His last day that he'll actually be working is next Tuesday. Um, he worked at Cedar Springs, I think, for three years before he came to work for the Sheriff's Department. And the Sheriff's Department, when it's all said and done, he'll have about twenty-six years in retiring from us. I think he's been a great asset to Cedar Springs, to the community. He's a community policing type oriented deputy. So he goes into the businesses. He talks to them. He deals with the managers of the parks. And he, he stops down to City Impact during those events and, uh, and it's gonna, it's kind of sad to see him go because he's done a great job here in the city of Cedar Springs. His last official day, uh, I believe will be March first, but he has time that he has to burn, so he'll be out of here.
For him.
If you have any questions for me?
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you for yours and. Nice. Yeah, but you were walking around, so it's, it's nobody's fault. Didn't shrink.
Late night. Appreciate that.
Well, it was, you know, it felt cold out there, but for that time of year, it was not cold.
It didn't. I wasn't, like toward the end, right before the ball, I kind of had to put, I had sweatshirts on and I finally had to put my coat on, but really wasn't that bad at all.
Good time.
We're at what?
You had to take layers off.
Oh.
Plus if you wanted to.
I bet. You never stand still a pair of hands.
Very good time that night. Yeah.
Just a, just a personal preference for me. Can we change that particular seat to law enforcement?
See, law enforcement?
The police department?
Circle hours.
Only if you, uh, run again.
Yeah.
We have a police department. All right. Understand why.
Yep.
We have a police department.
Right. We don't anymore.
We have the sheriff's department. We're not gonna make the sheriff's department list for law enforcement.
Yeah. Sure. Okay, fire department, Troy Detloff.
All right. So, uh, uh, next meeting, we will have a review of our year. Um, so we'll get that report out to you guys. You can go through that. Um, we had a record-breaking year runs for calls this year as far back as I can remember. I'm sure Jerry can kind of go back and we had eight hundred and seventy-eight calls for the year.
It's continuing to go up and we were never that low.
Just forecast to keep going up. So, uh, just from the trends that I got right now, we're looking at probably nine hundred and fifty by the end of next year. So I hope it doesn't go that high, but if it does, um, so I have my report. I'm continuing off with the same report that we had before. If you guys need any modifications with that, if you're happy with that, um, we can go through. I know that, uh, there's been some requests to put in the report for aid given as well as aid received. Um, so we can kind of get a gauge on how the guys are doing, if they're burning out, not showing up, if we're having some manpower issues, things like that. So. So that's really about it for us going through. And, uh, I did appreciate the New Year's Eve party. It was great. So, you know, did a really good job. So, thank you.
Question for Acting Chief? Give us some ideas as to what personnel you might need as additional. I had mentioned to former Chief Fraser that I thought he probably needed two. I still believe that. Uh, but, uh,
That is definitely a true statement. Um, adding the, uh, Greg for the full-time position that we had went through there is made it so that we can actually get done what we need to get done because we really are to the point now where we need full-time. The second one is coming pretty fast. Um, because what's happening is now we're getting a lot of calls in that window that are from about three o'clock in the morning to that six o'clock window, which Greg doesn't start till six, six-thirty. So it's, we have to count on other people going through that are usually working at four, five o'clock in the morning. So it's, it's definitely coming. It's something we have to start talking about and that's probably what we'll ring up in the budget workshop going through and decide if we want to do it this year or if we're talking next year or how it goes. Cause there are quite a few interests in people in continuing that. So, yeah, most definitely.
Thank you.
Need to know.
Yeah.
Keep ahead of it.
We're behind on. That's what it is.
Yeah, we are.
We haven't caught up.
You need to.
We, we also have a few big items that are coming up too. We have, uh, gear that's coming out of, uh, out of our NFPA standard. So that's gonna end up being replaced. And then we're gonna have a truck we're coming in due for a truck replacement from Kent County in twenty twenty-six. So, and that is just gone crazy expensive. So, yeah. So, all right.
Yeah. Baby clerk.
So you guys already got a little bit of my report. Um, but thankfully we are really working toward getting a lot of our spots filled. Um, we do have a handful left. Um, grant. Um, we got a new tabulator and bat machine that will be used during our early voting. Um, we are still waiting on some other equipment as well with that state grant with no estimated delivery date. So with all things in elections right now, it is extremely fluid. Um, as Mr. Gross mentioned, the, the law doesn't quite mesh with what actually has to happen. Um, so I know that I'm not the only one that is seeing difficulties with some of the laws that have been put in place and actually being able to, um, accommodate them. Um, I wanted to thank the staff. Um, I was here on holiday stuffing envelopes to meet a deadline, which, um, was a difficult one to meet because printers across the straight, acro- across the state, um, were no longer accepting new orders for a required notice that was, um, had to be put out by every single clerk in the state. Um, and part of it was delays in legislation and there was part of it as well as delays in the Bureau of Election and getting the information out that was needed. So when every single clerk in the state needed these forms printed, printer said, whoa, we can't do that. So then it fell on local clerks to do. Um, so I know I was here during holiday and every single person in this office was stuffing envelopes. So we did get every single notice out on time. Um, so I just wanted to thank everyone for their cooperation and participation to make that happen. Um, that's a lot of the things you guys don't see, um, behind the scenes. Um, we're just kind of chugging along and we'll continue to roll with the tide as far as elections go and, um, keep moving forward.
Question. As we grow, um, we know this, this room is getting smaller for the size of elections that are coming.
Is everything?
Um, why don't we use the schools?
Well, schools generally won't have us for nine days in a row. They have regular school programming during that time. Um, there are some schools that do permit other, um, places, but because of our size, this room makes do. Um, whereas if we were gonna do an early vote joint endeavor, like with Solent Township or Nelson, we could not accommodate that here more than likely. Um, but we've been able to manage with this room as is. The biggest struggle in this room is the desk because it can't be moved. Um, but we've done a really good job working with what we have. Um, but generally schools, churches and those types of things. Um, they really limit their use because you have to have certain agreements in place and part of it is security as well, especially if the, the school is in session. Um, a lot of schools have really cut back on that because of security concerns. So.
Finance Director, Emily Landon.
All right. Good evening. So I survived my first week without Darla. I'm happy she's back, but glad she got to get away and have a good time. So, um, things went well. I'm still learning a lot every day. Um, um, we're very excited to be able to share the financial statements for the previous fiscal year and tonight. Um, it's been a long time coming. We've had a couple of delays in getting these completed. So it's nice to have those done and I was able to finish up all the other year-end reporting that goes along with it. So it feels good to have that completed now. Um, and yeah, it was nice to have Peter come in and share those financials with you and, um, go over those a little bit. So if you guys have any questions, um, you know, feel free to reach out to them, um, or, you know, ask me. And if I don't know, I can find out. I'm still learning myself. So, um, yeah, if anything comes up with those financials, just, uh, yeah, feel free to bring it up. Um, and yeah, going forward, just gonna be working on, uh, getting some ten ninety-nines and W twos out here, um, for, um, the tax year. Um, and then also start working on the budgeting for the next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we don't have code enforcement or building inspection. Um, do we have any board and commission? We did, did we get minutes from them? Everything's going good with that? All right, council comments. Mr. Gross.
I just want to point out one thing. Uh, something else I placed on Rebecca's plate. Uh, being a person who is involved with another, another governmental entity, I hear one side and, uh, I know we have our side, the consideration for a mutual meaning of the two planning commissions to discuss the four twenty-five, which is supposed to happen, I believe yearly and has not for years. Uh, I had suggested to the other governmental and to this one that maybe we should have it in a neutral location. Uh, that government wants us to come out there. We want them to come here because we tape all of the meetings. Uh, kind of tossed it back to Rebecca and, uh, as to whether we could tape the meeting anywhere other than here, meaning the library, the fire department or whatever. Uh, she suggested the county sheriff's new offices. She did reach out and check with them and they said they could do it. So I will be presenting that to the other governmental entity. Uh, and I would like to see that happen and get together. And it is an opportunity for both our planning commission and their complaining commission to sit down at their own table and just discuss something. My feelings were that if we sat here or ours sat here and they're down there, it's dominant.
Right.
And I don't think that's a good way to go based on the way things have gone here not too long ago. Uh, I think it needs to be on an equal level. I did some checking and, uh, based on my understanding, each of the planning commissions would start their meeting like it was their meeting. And then when they came to order with that, then the other one would do theirs. They keep their own minutes. Hopefully they come out real close to each other. So it's, it's a mutual discussion between the two and it could be open for the public. But they keep their own meeting. So they have it as a meeting for them. So the next thing is just creating a night where they could get them both together. So, but, uh, thank you for doing that. thank you for doing that. Okay. Uh, again, I apologize for the past week and being late. Uh, but as we all know, things come up. Uh, I hated to hear that Rose had anybody that passed within her family where she had to be off this evening. And, uh, my heartfelt feelings towards them, uh, kind of curious in a way, uh. I have a sister-in-law that was part of the Grimes family, which Rose was. And I'm wondering if it was one of that lineage, so I knew the whole entire family, being from Sand Lake. Everybody knew the Grimeses, everybody knew the Grosses, so it was just, that's just the way it was, but, uh, uh, my heartfelt feelings for them. I like the way we went tonight. I think there was good discussion. Uh, we stumbled here and there, but I think it's been a good flow. And, uh, I'm trying my best to make this meeting longer because it's, uh, we're getting done, we're getting done way too quick, so, but that's, okay.
Mr. Merrill.
Uh, I heard, I wasn't at the New Year's event, but I heard it went amazing. Well done, really well done. Thank you for all you do. You know, I just heard terrific things about it, so. And this bow of like condolences and prayers are with your family and I'm sure you're gonna come back and watch this, so. Um, as far as Officer Cook, man, I love that guy. He's a good officer and yeah, I hope you guys are doing a retirement party for him. So. Congratulations, Officer Cook, and, uh, best, best of luck in retirement. So. I'm sorry for my voice. Very raspy. And, uh, thank you guys. I, I totally agree with Mr. Gross. This meeting went so smooth. There's super good discussion. I feel like I'm really picking up very quickly. So, a lot of reading during the week, so. Uh, and again, I'm, I'm still learning, so I'm always learning. The day I quit learning, I'm gonna be dead, so. Just continue to pray blessings over this town. I love this town, so I'm so honored to serve here. So thank you guys and thank you for Mayor, Mayor Pro-Town for what you guys do and super excited, super excited to see what the future holds, so.
He's too excited.
I know.
Yes. Yeah, we do. We need some fresh meat.
How about Mrs. Race? What do you have?
I'm excited because it, uh, it went well and you ask excellent questions. You can't ever ask wrong. I'm still learning. I looked at that audit book and I was like, I have no idea what's going on right now, so I'll have to review that. So it's very, it's very normal to feel that way and I mean, even in the positions that we're in, this is new to us too, so. But we have a great team of people. The city is just looks great. I hope they keep the lights up all year round. I love it. Um, I heard that uh, the, the turnout was amazing, so thank you Perry. You did a great job with that. And hopefully there'll be a thousand people or two thousand next time. You never know, so, um. Hopefully the DPW gets some sleep right now, because they got some plowing to do and appreciate all of that. And I think that's about it.
Alright, now we're on to mayor comments. Um, first off, I need to make a plug. We're going to have, um, what we are calling a city connect chatting with city leaders on January sixteenth, which is a Tuesday, the next Tuesday from six to seven here in the council room, um, to let everybody get to know us and, and talk to us about, um, what they want for the city, um, what they're, you know, what they're looking for, um. We wanna, we wanna have a face this year. We wanna be, um, very pro people and we want to hear your opinions and we want to hear your wants and needs and what you think would be great in the area. Um, so please come out on Tuesday from six to seven and chat us up. It'd be great. Thank you. Um, also, um, once again, uh, the staff. You know, it's, it is hard to be up here. And to know what order you're supposed to be doing everything in, um, you know, but we're all human and that's the point. The point is, we're all human and everybody has their ideas and we just need to work together to try and get things taken care of and listen to other people's sides and not just think that we know what we're doing because we don't. We, you know, there's, other people have different things that have happened in their life that make them think about things differently, and sometimes you need, need a, a check to understand that. Um, and, um, I think it flowed really nice tonight too, and I think you are doing great. You, all of you guys. I appreciate the board we work with and the discussions we have and that we can have a discussion and not have argument. So. Why do you want to have one view? Yeah. Alright, I think I'm done. So we're gonna close the meeting at eight eighteen.